So I'll call this meeting to order, and as you all please stand for the invocation by Pastor Michael Brasher. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you all for being here tonight with Father Edson and Father. Father, we thank you for this day, for all your blessings you've given to us, and Father, thank you for the little things you give us and like, things that we may not notice every day. The Lord, we know your word declares that we should call on you with trust in you and acknowledge you for wisdom. And that's what we do tonight. And Father, we pray for this body that should get them wisdom and guidance and help so that everything that's done here tonight will be pleasing in your eyes. Rest in Jesus' name we pray.
And we have a special guest.
We have two special guests. They're brothers. They are Mason and Carter McComb. They're students at Kidstone Elementary, and they will do the pledge for us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Real call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. A Green?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Laster?
Here.
Mr. M Green?
Here.
All right, item five on the agenda tonight is the work session part of this. Item A, five A, is the acceptance of the minutes. Questions, comments, anything about the minutes that we sent out? Thank you, Brenda, as always. Item B is Lori Lloyd from the Right Place. Lori, if you don't mind, thank you, ma'am.
Hi, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Lori Floyd. I'm the executive director of The Right Place. We, I have left some information up there for the council members. I have had the honor of working with some of you in the past in different roles and have met a couple of you. We just wanted to give you a little bit of information about what we're doing and what we would be able to offer to you guys in Jacksonville. We are a nonprofit, offering affordable housing and supportive services for those who are struggling with homelessness in our communities and our surrounding areas. I have already actually started working with some people in Jacksonville. There are two gentlemen I know that are struggling with homelessness right now. One of them, I actually have started the process of hopefully getting him some disability services so he can get some money coming in to be able to afford housing. The other one, we're very new in his finding, but we are working with him to offer whatever resources in the line of either getting into mental health services or whatever we can offer to kind of help him find housing and get off the streets. We run into this all the time. We are running a drop-in center out of Anniston. We were fortunate enough that a shelter was started in Anniston, but they leave in the mornings and they come and spend the day with us at The Right Place and then have a place to sleep at night across the street. And with that, we're averaging about fifty people a day coming through the drop-in center, where we can work with them on job skills, trying to help them get their GED, whatever services that we might be able to do to help move them forward. We know a lot of them are struggling with mental illness or substance abuse, so we try to find resources that might allow them to have opportunity there as well to get them off the street. A couple of flyers that are in your information, the packet that I gave you. The Safe Place Drop-In Center was a program that we actually started to be able to help people after COVID. We recognized that when we had people in a hotel room during COVID, they were able to get services. We were able to see them every day and work on some of these challenges that they face. And from that, we had fifty-three people in hotel rooms during the time that we were shut down for about two and a half months. At the end of that time, we transitioned fifteen percent of those people into their own apartments instead of back out onto the street. So when we realized what a great opportunity that was to be able to make that contact on a regular basis, we started the drop-in center, and in our first year, we got sixty-eight people in their own apartments and off the street at that point as well. So it's definitely something that works. We're just going to continue to try to offer this as an opportunity to keep finding what we need to do to hopefully make a change in their life and their opportunity. So we would love the chance to talk to you more about what we do and how we could see a good fit in Jacksonville alone. We have a heavier presence in Anniston because that is where we are housed, but we are more than happy to help in any way we can with people who are struggling here because our ultimate goal for everyone is that everyone deserves a safe place to call home. So we want to figure out whatever we can to help them get off the street. Any questions for me?
I just want to thank you for your support and what you do in Anniston. I was privileged to work with you years ago and some projects when I was car chief there. And, you know, we're blessed that we don't have a large problem, but still, even if you only stop in two or three, that is an issue. That is an issue that needs to be looked at and resolved. And I think there was a small group that was already looking and trying to do some things and find different avenues of where people might could go just for shelters. I do believe she got ahold of you?
Yes.
Okay. I gave her your name and number, so I thought it was okay.
Yeah, we've talked, and that was one of the gentlemen I actually started working with. And so we are in the process. I know he has a really high presence at the Episcopal Church, I think it is. And so I'm in touch with them on a regular basis too with working with that individual. And then the newest one was actually a call from Captain Sparks, who is retired now and at one of the local churches up here as well. And he reached out to me not too long ago saying he had somebody that he was trying to figure out what to do with and could I help him? And so we've started that conversation with him as well. So I guess one of the things I want you to understand is that if you do run into an issue with someone on your streets, always give us a call and let's see what we can do to help you. We may not have all the answers, but we can definitely try to find resources for them. So we would love to partner with you in any way that we can.
Well, I'm excited. It appears that at least something came out of COVID was positive. I would have never thought that would have been that kind of turnaround, so.
Yeah, well, we just noticed, you know, I kept watching them. There were, you know, there was nowhere for them to go where they could be out of the elements and be productive. And so when we had that opportunity to open the drop-in center, and it's been running for almost four years now, and it just truly is life-changing for some of them because we get to build that foundation and that relationship with them and encourage them to find new paths and new ways to get them off the street. And one of our most exciting thing coming is that we are in the process of working with Gadsden State, and they are actually going to start offering GED classes and continuing education classes in our drop-in center the first of August. So it'll, instead of us trying to get them to them, they're going to come to us, and we think it will really have a huge impact.
That is good.
Any other questions?
Well, all of my information is on your flyers in front of you, and my card is in the booklet as well. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I will be glad to help you in any way I can.
Thank you, ma'am. All you do.
Thank you.
Next item is item C, the elections official, please, Brenda.
Tonight on your agenda, you have the resolution to your election official, which are basically the full board, which are the polling sites. It's down to the wire. I'm getting enough to just fill the spot so we don't have an alternate on the resolution. So if you'll notice, the last part of the resolution states that if further resolved, that the city council hereby delegates the authority to appoint election officials to City Park and Long from July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. That's just in case I actually get some alternates or I have an emergency and I have to just find somebody to put in that spot. And I have nothing left to do to get it up for me. So I just wanted to make sure because we didn't do that last time.
Is there any questions? Thank you. I know it's kind of chaotic, but especially if you don't have enough people.
If anybody knows anybody, I need some.
Thank you, Brenda. Item D is Wakefield Property. Terry?
Yes, sir. We have been working with Bill Wakefield, who has some property up by the Eastwood School. And we have negotiated a plan that will benefit him and benefit the city, but also give the city nineteen acres roughly of the ability to build some habitat homes, some other housing up there because it'll be big enough, because it'll also be there with the playground, the ball field, and then eventually, Eastwood School will be remodeled for a community center. So this land is ready to go for the letter of intent. I've talked to Bill. He's ready to sign it. So tonight, we would, I hope we get to approve that for the mayor to sign on behalf of the city, and we can move forward on the rest of the legal work. So it's kind of a heaven-sent property here because we've been looking for property in a lot of places, and this will give us a chance to have somewhere we can help some more housing and help people get in housings as well. So that's about it. I think it's a good opportunity.
Need discussion from anyone else on that? Thank you for working on that, Terry. Item E, any other business? Mayor, I know you have a couple of things.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that the contract on the house on Dennis Street that you're familiar with, we rent, that lease is up at the end of the month. We've been talking with them. They want to continue leasing that house, and they would really like to sign a two-year lease at the same rental that we've been charging, which I think is pretty reasonable for both parties. They do a good job keeping the place up, and it's good to just keep the same person in there as we can. So that is, we're going to add that. I'm okay about that. We're going ahead and add that to the agenda tonight. So we need that lease with them.
Marilyn?
Yes, we also don't add a contract to sign the lease with Arlen Tacos for a, sorry, I don't have that thing in front of me, but for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for five years, but with the building fifty dollars a month, we increase in rent for each of those five years, then renegotiate at that time. And that's, we just didn't have that till this afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to get that out to you. So you may want to look at that. I mean, we have it ready to add to the agenda if you want to do it. If you want to have more time to look at it, we can do that later if you do.
Current lease expires on the eighteenth?
Expires August eighteenth.
Eighteenth. And the party that is interested in it, that is interested in taking over immediately?
Yeah, they're interested in taking it over right now if the current tenant gives us a release from the building. They paid rent through the end of July, so they only have about three, four more days. The month of July, they've indicated they don't have any intentions of continuing in August, but they have not given us a notice of that. The lease says they're supposed to give a thirty-day notice. They have not. But we've given them a notice that they have to end it by at least August eighteenth.
And what I understand, I don't know if this is for a fact, but what I understand that the two parties involved have been discussing maybe some purchase of equipment.
Yes, the person that put energy in leasing the building now has worked out a deal with the current tenant to buy the property that actually belongs to the tenant. There are some things that he's attached to the building. Of course, the lease says it has to stay. Like the hood, the kitchen area, the walk-in freezer, some things like that are attached to the building. But some of the smaller items, the current person's one, has worked out a deal purchasing stuff from him.
So that's on the agenda also for tonight?
We were planning on adding it. We didn't get this until two or three o'clock this afternoon, so didn't have a chance to get it out to you. So if you want more time, I can try to get that to you.
Is there any other business?
The only other thing I might mention about that, we do the house there with other people interested in that building, so.
I also, I mean, I know I saw that amendment that could be on there, and just getting the lease, I would like a little bit more time to look at it. If there is a current lease through the eighteenth, is that right?
We, I voted last time to send them a thirty-day notice, which would have been, it was sent out dated the end of their lease would be August eighteenth. Giving them a thirty-day notice. They have to be out by August eighteenth.
But is this new agreement taking over that existing, or is this, this is establishing a new?
No, it will be, have a new lease with us. And we don't have a release from the current tenant, although he said verbally he wants to be out of there before the end of March. So he got three days or four days or something. So technically, we still don't have it. Technically, it's still not ours right now.
The mayor doesn't, the guy that wants the lease now, he's ready to open up as soon as he can get in there. And I think he told me today, shooting for the eighteenth or so, try to open. So that's why he's pushing the envelope because he was having a meeting with all of his staff and everybody today, getting all the ducks in a row to be able to open the eighteenth if all possible. That's, I think that's hard.
That's what Scott said, Rush, he was very big about that. He did tell me all the big things as well.
So the current lease order is, we see is going to vacate prior to the eighteenth. They're ready to go ahead and vacate now?
We don't have that in writing. He has told me verbally, he's going to vacate. I do not have it in writing. This lease has thirty-eight written notes. So I don't know if I'd be a good question for Richard, but we go ahead and do it tonight. We need to.
Do a contingent upon.
And it's ready to sign.
Contingent on getting a release from the current tenant?
Sir?
Contingent on getting a release from the current tenant that is vacating from. And I probably agree my way to do it.
And with them talking back and forth, you know it's pretty much a done deal that he's going to get out because they're talking about the equipment and everything else, so.
Yeah, I feel confident he's planning on getting out, but still.
Yeah, you don't have it in eyes.
It's safe to hear. I think he has a re-intention. Basically, he's been closed for two months. I mean, I like the idea that we're going to, you know, open the doors back up, but I think we need that, with that contingent upon.
Yeah, I guess the current leaseholder still can exercise their option to purchase.
Yes.
So, and that's, I mean, I wanted to, I mean, all the action would be is just authorizing you to enter into this agreement. And I think with the contingency in there, and I'm also, I'm trying to think, I mean, I know you mentioned the rental in Dennis. I don't know how much landlord-ing we're really in. But, you know, if, I have no issue with this, but I also look at if someone comes along and says, well, hey, I would have offered X much more and have done something. I don't know how much responsibility we have to be good stewards of the property and maximizing. I mean, I like what I, I mean, I just don't know what's in here other than a bunch of legal.
It's basically the signed lease.
Yeah.
We have with the other tenant with a few changes. Richard has looked at it. And that has been sent out to several people that is interested in the building. They have seen that as well.
Hey, are you clear on that pervigent change?
I am now.
I didn't want to assume, but.
Yes, I just wrote it like he was talking, what we have already, and then just per the attached contingent upon currently see Stan Gowen vacating the premises before August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. So is that?
I think so.
If we're going to wait until August eighteenth about signing then?
I don't think that we have to.
He's going to start making plans for opening up. By the way, it'd be open August eighteenth.
Yeah. No, I think that gives us the opportunity to go ahead and sign it, but if the guy's not gone, he can't go in. He can go in if he's gone.
You think we're okay with that, Richard?
Yes.
Subject to, okay. There you go. So I should be doing my.
Hey, he earns his keep tonight, you know.
Sorry to cause all the confusion, but.
Two legal opinions in one night. I don't know if that's.
He charges by the hour, not the action.
Don't ask him another question. He'll charge us more than that.
All right, so are we good for that? A couple, please put on the agenda. People vote however they want to vote. All right, so we'll move on to item six, to get to the actual city council meeting, part of this meeting. Item six, the adoption of the minutes.
So can you just pause two minutes and let me get it added?
Sure, sure. I know we have several that need to be added. So is Ms. Personin. How's everyone doing? Summer heat, about to get you off?
How's your mama now?
Yeah, how's your mama now?
Your mama now?
Mr. Taylor? Do they plan on serving food? Because rumors was going to be a tequila bar. I don't know how.
Here, tonight?
Oh, no.
That's why we have so many people in here.
What you have to do is wait until the general adjournment, and then we can all talk about it.
Days before Arlen was going to close, there were rumors that people would have gotten by now, but they're turning to a tequila bar.
I think that was one of the many. There was several. I don't know all the names. There was four or five different entities that I think was interested in the building, whether it's just the building or the business or.
This is the name of this one, do they get for?
Yeah, that's the night. Think this may be more meeting three kind of thing?
Meeting three?
I could be with that.
No, you kind of, that's pretty current, all the tequila shots are tonight. We've not thought about that yet at meetings. Unless you got everyone else stirred up when you said it. Everyone's having a little sidebar in the session. I sure will. I've already done my part. Three ginger mints, so I got to drive home. Thank you, sir. I think A Green's got a packet now. I think he's. Want to close it up? Good? All right, great. So go back to item six, the adoption of minutes. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions? Do I have a motion?
Just move.
I have a second. Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Real call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item seven is the adoption of the agenda. I do believe we have some additions.
And we do. To the main agenda, add item nine A, consider action to schedule a called public hearing regarding the appeal for alcohol licenses for Brothers Bar and Grill LLC, doing business as Brothers Bar Brittany Ridley for Thursday, August seventh, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty PM in the council chambers at three-twenty Church Avenue Southeast, Jacksonville, Alabama. Also, add item sixteen A, consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the commercial lease agreement with Woodruff Family Trust LLC, doing business as Jacksonville Homestyle Eatery located at one-eleven Ladaiga Dr. Street, Southeast Jacksonville, Alabama, three-six-two-six-five, per the attached, subject to the current lessee Stan Gowen, vacating the premises before August eighteen, twenty-twenty-five. Also to the main agenda, add item sixteen B, consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the economic development agreement with Devon Sonderman Oak Hill Capital LLC, per the attached. And then to item seventeen, amend to consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the residential rental agreement with Roger Pete Cleveland and Tara M. Cleveland for the property located at three-eighteen Dennis Street Southwest, Jacksonville, Alabama, three-six-two-six-five, per the attached. And finally, to the consent agenda, add item twenty-six, disposition of surplus property. Item three, mayor, aid decal number seven-eight-four-three, twenty-twenty-two Chevrolet Taco, VIN one GN, SKLED, six NR, two-one-nine, one-three-five, sell.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Real call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item eight is public comments concerning any agenda item. This is your opportunity to address the council on anything that has currently been just approved from this tonight's agenda. Seeing no one come forward, move on to item nine.
Public hearing for July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five at six o'clock PM regarding economic development and the Alabama State Constitution Amendment seven-seven-two.
So we're just announcing this public hearing, or do we have to vote for this public hearing?
This is opening hearing.
Right, open the hearing. That's what I thought. Okay, I'm getting better. All right, so I'll now open this public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item nine A.
Consider action to schedule a called public hearing regarding the appeal for alcohol licenses for Brothers Bar and Grill LLC, doing business as Brothers Bar Brittany Ridley for Thursday, August seventh, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty PM in the council chambers at three-twenty Church Avenue Southeast, Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion? Move. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm sorry, real call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item ten.
Consider action to accept the planning commission report regarding painting and modification to the fronts of building on the west side of the public square, per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? If you've not seen this, this is the northwest corner of the square. They're doing some remodeling. The Learning Tree owns the three buildings there. Remodeling, and it's been approved by planning to change the colors. I think it's going to really improve the brightness and the newness of that side of the square. Any other, any other, all right, hearing none. Real call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item eleven.
Consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seventy dash twenty-five to close and vacate a section of Reynolds Street Northwest between Cardinal Lane Northwest and Pelham Road South. This is the first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Since this is first reading, there'll be no action taken on that tonight, so we'll move on to item twelve.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty-two sixty dash twenty-five, appointing election officials for the general municipal election on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five and September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five runoff election.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Real call, please.
Mr. A Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M Green?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Item thirteen.
Consider action to approve JPWP number twenty-five dash one thirty-eight, replacing HVAC units at the Train Depot Meeting Room, per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? For those who don't know, we had some water damage due to some temporary AC units at the Train Depot. Train Depot is one of those places, in my opinion, it's, there was a lot of hard work done years ago to remodel that. It's a great place for meeting, a great place to just to meet and do different type of. So we're trying our best to try to go back as close as we can to the authentic wood that was damaged. Keep your fingers crossed that we're able to get to that point. I'm sorry, that's just, it's a common. I'm sorry, that's just, it's, it's kind of important to try to get that, keep that place going, in my opinion. Any other discussion?
Is it just the, um, meeting area, is it the kitchen too?
Uh, I think it's mainly the, the large, large.
They have discovered that, you know, like, redo the kitchen as well. They thought maybe they was going to be able to avoid that, but still a lot of moisture in the kitchen areas.
Any other discussion on that?
No. But all, all we're voting on here is the HVAC replacement, this is.
Right.
This is covered on this.
So we can actually get the moisture levels down to do some of the other, other work. Kind of, car for the horse kind of thing. Alright, uh, any discussion? If not, uh, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item fourteen.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the non-binding letter of intent between the city of Jacksonville and WMW Land LLC for the purchase of approximately nineteen acres of land located in the southeast portion of Jacksonville known as Eastwood Community, per the attached.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion?
I'm excited about what that can bring to, uh, to Jacksonville, it's a community there, appreciate those who are working on that, great.
Uh, alright, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item fifteen.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Hiller for annual sprinkler, fire alarm, and back flows at City Hall, Public Safety Complex, Public Library, and Community Center, per the attached.
Alright, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item sixteen.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the senior community service employment program, CSAP, post-agency agreement, uh, program year twenty twenty-five with East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, per the attached.
So moved, second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item sixteen A.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the commercial lease agreement with Woodruff Family Trust LLC, doing business as Jacksonville Homestyle Eatery located at one eleven Ladaiga Street Southeast Jacksonville, Alabama, three six two six five, per the attached, subject to the current less see Stan Gowen vacating the premises before August eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is two seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item sixteen B.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the economic development agreement with Devon Sonderman Oak Hill Capital LLC, per the attached.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion is two seconds, again. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Uh, item seventeen.
Consider action to authorize the mayor to sign the residential rental agreement with Roger P. Cleveland and Tara M. Cleveland for the property located at three eighteen Dennis Street Southwest Jacksonville, Alabama, three six two six five, per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion is second, any discussion?
Is that going to be for the two years?
Yes. Are you, are everyone okay with two years?
Yeah.
No discussion, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item eighteen.
Consider action to approve the amendment to the City of Jacksonville Policies and Procedures Manual, Compensation and Need Policies, the Play Plan, Section Two, Salary Range, Item One, per the attached.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item nineteen.
Consider action to reschedule the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting to August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM, and scheduled budget work sessions for August eleventh, August fourteenth, August eighteenth, August twentieth, and August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at five o'clock PM, per the attached.
So moved. Have a motion, do I have a second? Second. Was everyone okay with those budget meeting time?
So moved.
Alright, just, just want to check one more time. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item twenty.
Consider action to schedule a called council meeting for September second, twenty twenty-five at twelve o'clock PM to canvass the election results for the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five municipal elections.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item twenty-one.
Consider action to approve the employment of the following. A is Richard Cleveland McCain, part-time substitute firefighter EMT, range eleven, effective upon compliance with ordinance number two seven three, due to the reclassification of Sidney Michael Pointer. V is Joseph Daniel Champion, part-time substitute firefighter, paramedic, range eleven A, effective upon compliance with ordinance number two seven three, due to the reclassification of Charles Huey.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Item twenty-two.
Consider action to approve the promotion of the following. Brandon Ray Masters, Fire Lieutenant, Paramedic, range sixteen A, effective July thirty, twenty twenty-five, due to the promotion of J.D. Latta to Assistant Fire Chief.
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is two seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Consider agenda.
Item twenty-three, budget amendments. Item twenty-four, purchases over seventy-five hundred dollars. Item twenty-five, request to attend conference training sessions with costs exceeding one thousand dollars. Item twenty-six, disposition of surplus property. Item twenty-seven, records destruction.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, let's do that, second.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, real call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M Green.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Alright, we're on to item twenty-eight. That's public comment for any general item. This is your opportunity to address the council on anything you'd like to discuss the council with, just make sure you state your name and address and you get the city clerk, so she has your information before you step down. No, both of you?
Well, I have Vanna with me and she's going to pass out calendars, so.
So you practiced that before, yeah?
No, I know, I, I didn't need to practice that, I promise, so.
He's quick.
I, I am, I, I'm quick witted, that's, you know, anyone that knows me knows that's not true, so. It is great to be with y'all tonight, and, uh, we are getting ready to start another wonderful school year with Jacksonville City Schools. Uh, I wanted to just give you a calendar, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, because I always get, you know, when is this happening, when is that happening, and so, uh, on there you will see, uh, that the start date for our students, of course, is August seventh, um, if you want to come, and welcome everyone, I love that, I think that is one of the greatest traditions that I've ever been a part of. Um, council and, of course, having, uh, law enforcement and fire department out there, the kids love that. And so, on the seventh, uh, we start A through K. And then, of course, uh, after that, we have L through Z on the eighth, and so, you just pick a day that works for you. I will say, A through K is a little bit more popular, because that is the first day, first day. And, but people say, why do y'all do that? Well, whenever you have a bunch of little guys who have never been in school before and you're trying to teach them the rules and all the procedures, um, it's kind of nice if you, uh, cut that group in half, uh, not literally, but just by numbers, uh, so that you can, uh, kind of, have a little bit more, uh, time with each individual student, so. But, uh, again, want to invite you, uh, on that first day, uh, pick a day, come on out, but also, August first, we have our institute day. And of course, uh, some have been with us in the past, and, uh, it is a great day, it's just a day to come back and welcome the teachers. Uh, we'll be down at Kitty Stone, uh, at eight o'clock on the first, so if you'd like to come out and have a biscuit, um, if you'd like to stay till eight-thirty, um, we'll let you just get up and, uh, say a word or two, and, uh, it's just a great time, head by all, and so, a lot of fun, a lot of competition, um, we just kind of laugh at each other and pick on each other and welcome each other back, uh, look at some, uh, just some images of what everyone's been up to during the summer, it's just a fun time. And we have a very special person that is going to, uh, come and welcome everyone back too, and that is, uh, Ms. Georgia May, a county, so, uh, Eastwood teacher, and, uh, she's going to be with us, and I'm excited about that, and I appreciate Ms. Laster getting me in touch with her. Saw her speaking down, um, at the county commission meeting, I thought, really, that would be a great person to come and connect, um, the past and history with what's going on now, and so, uh, she's going to be with us. And, uh, she's, uh, excited about that, I'm excited about that, and so, again, if you can come out, be a part of, guarantee you. And then another special date is August third, which is on a Sunday at two o'clock, uh, we will be having our annual prayer walk to get the uh, year started off just right, and so at two o'clock, we will gather up at Kitty Stone, um, walk around there, pray over the school, and then walk up to the high school. Um, and so, anytime, though, that you want to pray for the schools, you go right ahead, um, we're not going to limit the Lord on, uh, just that day. Um, and I always encourage people, when you see a big yellow bus rolling through, just remember to pray for the schools, um, and that's all schools. Uh, we, we covet your prayers always. Um, again, council, thank you for everything that you do for us, uh, you just mean so much to us, and, uh, you're making a difference. And so I know, at some point in time, I may come back by, whenever you're doing the budgets, um, that is, if you want me to, if not, I'll just take the money and not bother you, how about that? But also, uh, you may be hearing some, uh, I don't want to say, just some concern that we're not allowing phones this year. I promise you, we didn't just sit around and go, hey, what can we do to really cause stress among parents and students? Hey, let's just take their electronic devices and, um, we'll just do away with them. So, y'all, we're following the law, um, the Focus Act, that's a Montgomery to us, uh, initiative directive, I should say. And, uh, again, uh, we are doing the very best that we can with that, that law came through this year. Uh, there was, uh, just a deadline of get your policy in place July one, and get it going, uh, on the first day of school. So i- if you've heard a rumor that our children, our students will not be able to have electronic communication devices, um, that is true in Jacksonville, uh, city schools, but also in every school system in the state of Alabama. And so what we are doing is we're providing yonder packs, uh, to our high school students, because it's really not an issue with the elementary kids, but the high school kids, uh, it is, and it's an issue to our parents, and we want to honor that, and we want to let them know. We're not going to take the phones, I don't want to take anyone's phone, to be honest with you. Um, I would either break it or lose it, or get it mixed up with someone else's phone, and we would be doing, uh, an injustice on that. So, um, they will put those in a bag, a little pouch, they will be able to hold their phones with them, they just will not be able to access those phones. Magnetic closure. Um, had a great question on social media, how many, uh, device, uh, stations do you have that can open those phones? I promise you, um, with hundreds of kids at the high school, we have more than one. And so, uh, we have, uh, many, many of those, and so hopefully it will be a, uh, pretty quick move through and just, you just put the device, the pouch up there, and it will unlock it. Um, I do know that it's caused a smart, and I'm a parent, I'm also a grandparent, and, um, our parents are used to having access to, um, their children all day long, I assure you. Um, and again, it is going to be an adjustment, it's going to be an adjustment for students who, um, have their phones with them all day long. Um, but it is during the instructional day, and that is the way the law is written, and so we don't get to pick and choose what laws. Um, but also, this law has within it, um, a survey that teachers will be taking at the end of the year, and that is at all the schools, um, as to whether or not we implemented that, and so we do not want to be sanctioned, we do not want to be, um, that school system that decided on our own to break the law. And so, we are trying to make that as painless as possible, and, uh, working with people. But, uh, again, I know that, uh, it's going to take some adjustments and getting used to. Um, we do have kids that are involved in after-school activities, we do have kids who are dual enrollment, um, and so, we're looking at that. But whenever they leave us to go to dual enrollment, they're on someone else's campus at that point in time, we understand that, some of them drive. Wouldn't it be crazy to, to tell a child that they couldn't have their phone on them while they're on the road? Uh, not that we want them looking on the road, chief, I promise, um, but if something were to happen. Um, also, after-school activities, we know that, that kids, and, and believe it or not, we're actually going to let kids do it the old-fashioned way too, if they need to call home, they can go down to the office, um, like, like, I'm going to say this, kind of like, we send out smoke signals, I don't know what y'all did, but, um, but it's one of those things where we're going to be as accommodating as we possibly can uh, be, and to our parents, um, again.
Are you talking about using a landline?
We still have one of those, we, we still have this thing that you plug into the wall, and, you know, and, and, you know, we actually found a rotary phone the other day, and we just wanted to see if a child could use it, and they couldn't, so. But I felt like I needed to, to address it, because we're not, we, I promise you, it's, we're not taking it lightly, and, again, um, I do know that parents have legitimate concerns, safety concerns, and they are used to, um, having access to their kids uh, during the instructional day. Again, we will be providing our devices to our kids, and kids can still email, but, you know, kids in email, that's, uh, you know, that's totally different. I know, that's kind of, that's kind of like the landline, I, I do know that.
I got a question, where would the pouches be stored?
They will have their pouches, they, we will assign the pouches to the students, and so, and that is not a charge to them, but if you lose it, um, and, uh, have to replace it, then we will charge you for it, but that's an investment that the board has made, um, in starting, uh, this, and so, this is the law of the land, again, but we will assign those out to them, and, you know, whenever we have, uh, parent night at the high school and all of the, we'll go into more detail on it, but, um, but we did put that out along with the, the board policy on, uh, social media, and so, um, again, this kind of came through rather quickly, I know some boards were kind of scrambling to get a July one board policy, I'm proud of our board. We had already a policy that we just needed to, um, refine a little bit, amend, I should say, so. But, uh, anyway, thank y'all for everything you do, hope to see you, and, uh, again, uh, prayer walk or institute, and before you leave, I, I just ask one favor, I'm, I'm trying to get as many videos as I possibly can of, uh, folks inviting, or just welcoming the teachers back, so if I could get y'all kind of in a corner, and all you have to do is say, hey, welcome back, and wish you a great year, I know it would mean a lot to them as well, so. Alright, alright. Thank y'all for everything you did.
Is there any else, anyone else? How you do, sir?
Hello, sir, my name is Grant Williams, uh, my address is eight zero four Thirteenth Avenue Northeast, Jacksonville, Alabama. Um, I sent all of you an email this past week about an incident of breastfeeding and the policies around breastfeeding at the pool, at the city pool. Um, some brief history, my wife breastfed both of my children at the pool without any issue, until they were done. Um, there was an incident last year, my wife spoke with Janice, the superintendent of the Parks and Recreation Department, and she showed Janice the, the state code about breastfeeding, and we thought everything was pretty well handled, I'm going to read the code for you right now. Section twenty-two, one thirteen, breastfeeding children in public or private locations. A mother may breastfeed her child in any location, public or private, where the mother is otherwise authorized to be present. With that being said, we were at the pool last week, and the lifeguards blew the whistle and got everyone out of the pool, and they said they had to shock the pool. I asked, well, what happened? There wasn't a lot of people in the pool, well, someone was breastfeeding in the pool. Okay, um, the next day, I, I did some research that night to see if that was standard in pools, and did not see that to be the case. So the next day, I verified with the, uh, I believe it's the pool manager, Levi, um, that that is why they shocked the pool. He said, yes, any bodily fluid, our rule is to shock the pool if any bodily fluid enters the pool. Um, Jacksonville Park and Recreation Department later posted on Facebook,[1773.18] Um, Jacksonville Park and Recreation Department later posted on Facebook, as directed by our superintendent, any instance of bodily fluids entering the water, such as feces, vomit, blood, and yes, breast milk, requires the pool to be cleared and treated for the safety of all patrons. I personally was rather surprised to see feces, blood, and vomit in the same sentence as breast milk, something that nourishes and heals and feeds, um, so I continued to look into it, and I saw, looked up the CDC, what does the CDC say about breast milk? They said, there is no known risk to other swimmers involving breast milk. I looked up Alabama, uh, Health Department, I contacted the Alabama Department of Health, they referred me back to the CDC and said they did not have any specific regulations about the pool. Um, a local pool indicator, Alabama, told a breastfeeding mother she had to get out of the pool, they ended up issuing a public apology to the mother and clarifying their rules. My concern is that if this rule is continued to be enforced, it will end up in the city being sued, or put in a bad light for something that we could solve very easily right now. Um, my request is a publicly stated at the front of the entrance what the rule is regarding breastfeeding in the pool. Um, multiple states have issued, all fifty states have the legal right for a woman to breastfeed in public. Multiple states have issued guidances on that, that say, yes, that includes going into the pool, Alabama, as far as I can see, has not issued a public guidance on that, but again, Department of Health referred me to CDC, which says the same thing. Um, that's pretty much the bulk of it, you can all refer to the email if you have any questions, um, I have some of the documentation here, if you'd like to see it in person tonight. One other issue that I would like the council to be aware of is the Parks and Recreation Department shut down comments on a post after it started getting comments about the breastfeeding issue. Um, on the Facebook post where they compared it to blood, feces, and vomit, they then shut down those comments, that's getting very close to some First Amendment's rights issues, I don't want the city to have to argue a case up to the Supreme Court, 'cause you violated my rights, it, just like the city to look at that, make sure the people who can turn off comments are aware of what's at stake of turning off public comments. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure, yeah, she has her name and address. Does anyone else like to address the council? Alright, so you know one come forward, move on to the next item, that's, uh, council member remarks, anyone?
I'd like to recognize our illustrious organizer for Sunday's activity, what a great job she did, she could've made it a little bit cooler, but other than that, it was a great afternoon.
I can't make it wonderful all the time.
You did a great job, it was a great, great afternoon.
Anyone else?
I know we took some action tonight, for those that are here and might be watching online, uh, several economic development opportunities were on the agenda tonight, and, you know, there are things that are happening in Jacksonville, um, and I think that through the election cycle and that season, people get a little bit more interest, and they kinda get it, uh, a little bit more excitement, uh, about what's happening in Jacksonville, but, uh, you know, there are council meetings when there might not be anybody out in the audience, but there's still things that are happening, um, but it, it is, um, it's always exciting around Jacksonville, the start of the new school year, I think kinda brings a, a refresh and renewed, um, atmosphere, you know, this, this, over, over the next month, the, the town is gonna be flooded with new students, uh, coming into the university, uh, people who have moved into Jacksonville for the city school system, and, and this is kinda just always a, it's not January, it's not January weather, we know, but it's kinda just this rebirth essence, uh, for, for Jacksonville, and I love, I love this time of year, and I thank you, Dr. Barber, uh, for what you've shared with us here tonight, and, and partnering with Jacksonville City as much as you can, uh, I think that that, that demonstrates what a partnership really is, it's reciprocity, it's not one giving and one receiving, it's us working together for the improvement of the lives of students, and there are a lot of things that public safety does, uh, through the SROs in the schools every single day, and through so many others, um, and, yes, y'all are having to take action that has been legislated, just like we have to do sometimes, and we don't get, we, we do get a choice in that, that's why elections are important, um, but I, I do believe that everything that y'all have done, and, and where we've been able to help, is taking actions to help students, um, and, uh, I look forward to serving the next four years with Councilwoman Laster, and whomever is elected, uh, council and mayor, uh, because there, this is exciting things that are happening here in Jacksonville, and I don't think any of our new hires are here tonight, but I say welcome to, to those two, and congrats on the promotion.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Alright, Mayor's report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to begin by saying a big thank you to librarian Christie Wallace, our librarian here in the town, and her staff, they had seven-hundred-and-five people in the summer reading program. Wow. Read ten-thousand-five-hundred-six books, that's great to give kids.
That was amazing.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-eight of those were children and teens, a hundred-and-sixty-seven adults were also taking part in the reading, summer reading program, so, great summer for them, had twenty-six events with nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight people participating, so, just, they, they kinda get lost over there sometimes, we kinda forget about them, they have great programs going on, it's a great, great summer for them. You know, I, I noticed that we have Assistant Chief Carl Harris sitting out in the audience, I wanted to recognize Carl, too. Carl, I got a, a page-long email from a lady from Illinois, that you affected her life in a very positive way, I, I wanted to just point that out to, to, to you and, and the public here. Uh, she made a drive, she and one other family member made a drive from Illinois, I don't remember exactly where in Illinois, to Riverview Hospital, that a relative's been put in the hospital over there, had a twelve-hour drive, she said, they had rented a Airbnb in Jacksonville, so once they left the hospital that evening, later on in the evening, they drove to Jacksonville, never been in the area, anywhere around here before, followed the GPS, but with all the construction stuff going around on the area, where their, their Airbnb, once they couldn't find it, they drove around for a while, ended up at the fire department, forced fire, and came to the door, Carl hadn't been, went out, ended up, talking with them, trying to give them directions, finally decided the best thing for him to do, just say, follow me. And he led them to the house, he knew exactly where they were going, waiting to lay safely in the house, make sure everything's okay, they were very appreciative, Carl, your attention to detail, so thank you for what you do, thank you, Carl. Our, our police officers, our, and the, in our service, fire service, just do a wonderful job, and that's a good example of what they, what they do. I do have a couple announcements that, that you'll see up there, of course, talking about back to school, so if you're interested in any of those dates, make a note of those, I think it was very good, that about our homeschool year, but also, Jackson Grace Academy beginning on August eleventh, JSU boys classes, we get off to twenty, so things start getting busy, same. Uh, back, school bags, you wanna take advantage of this opportunity, they gonna have a lot of activities going on down there, August the ninth, at the community center on Suckerville, so, all the usual kinds of things, some music, bouncy houses, and so forth, uh, and then Spirit on Mountain Street's coming up, that's always an event that we look forward to every fall, in, in connection with the start of JSU, and, um, that's, uh, August twenty-first this year, so, great, kinda sample some food from all the restaurants around town, around the area, and they will have some good entertainment, uh, I don't know exactly who the band's going to be this year, but some, some dates you wanna keep in mind, and I think that's all I have. Nope, Brenda had a commercial. She got back her commercial, she needs coworkers, so, she mentioned that earlier on, so.
That's all I have, thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, anything else? Need to come for the council? So do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. A Green.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Laster.
Yes.
Mr. M. Green.
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you all for being here, have a great night, and be safe.